I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Ryan Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for your blessings on this city. And God, we thank you for all of these first responders who are in this room today for your call on their lives and for their protection of us. And God, I just pray that you'll bless them, bless those who are on shift today, protect those who will be returning to shift tomorrow. With our police officers, God, I ask your wisdom for this council today with all the decisions they'll need to make. Thank you for the mayor and his staff, and just pray, God, that you'll keep your hand on us. We promise to give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting that was held September the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 2nd through the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Unfinished business. Ordinance rezoning property located at 1900 Rainbow Drive from an R1, one-family resident district to a B1 neighborhood business district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The owner requests the rezoning in order to make the zoning consistent with other commercial properties in the area, and the planning commission recommended approval. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget. This ordinance approved the following budgets. Drone Fund, $56,638,170. Special Revenue Fund is $8,374,761. The Debt Service Fund is $7,521,496. Enterprise and Internal Service Funds is $14,430,532. Capital Project Fund is $8,700,000. And the Capital Fund II is $8,300,000. Is there anyone speaking in regard to the budget? If you'll give your name and address, please.
I am Ryan McGlon. 201 Chrisland Drive, Gaston, Alabama, 35901.
Yes.
I'd just like to read a little bit. I'd like to say good morning to the council members and Madam President.
Good morning.
I'm Ryan McGlon, Commander at the City Gaston Fire Department. Thank you for allowing me time to speak with you today. I have been asked to approach the council on behalf of our commanders of the Gaston Fire Department. I'm here to voice concern regarding the raise you're considering voting upon today's session. I like to respect respectfully voice our concern and discouragement with a 44-cent raise for our commanders. The men who are receiving consideration for this raise are long-term dedicated men who love their career and truly have a passion for caring for the citizens of Gaston. Their devoted years of service to the City of Gaston remain loyal to their positions despite extremely challenging circumstances. While a raise is something we've been hoping to receive for some time, the small amount in relation to the other incremental raises being voted on for fellow firefighters, drivers, police officers is very discouraging. Our men are thankful for their professions, but were being forced to consider leaving the city based on the low pay scale in relation to other surrounding municipalities. These concerns have been presented to the council in various other meetings. My purpose for speaking for you today is at the request of my fellow commanders who have asked me to share their heart on hanging on by threads to protect this city. They're hanging on in hopes that this council and administration in City Gaston will step up and help close the gap on the pay scale that has already been discussed to have huge discrepancies when compared to our other stations in our other communities. The raise you're considering for our commanders was a small spark of hope the men would receive additional compensation for their years of dedication and service. The hope was the raise would be substantial enough to help ease the burden of providing for the families than the existing pay scale provides. Many of these commanders are working at current pay scales that require them to work additional careers or to work additional overtime shifts at a pace that is challenging for them to physically maintain just to provide a normal base of living. Raising the pay scale of firefighters and drivers by $2 an hour but raising long-term commanders by only 44 cents is not helping to invest in those who have invested in this community, not only with their positions but our hearts. These commanders have stayed and remain dedicated to service while others have left to gain higher compensation by surrounding communities. These circumstances has led to the morale of our commanders being at an all-time low. The low pay scale and the discouragement of the long-term commanders been reflected in hiring of new firemen for the city. The next generation of firefighters, including my own 18-year-old son, are overlooking this city as an option for employment because of the low morale and overall lack of support with the career of firefighters in the city. The potential for recruiting and maintaining dedicated civil servants is being deteriorated based on how you're compensating the most senior-ranking commander positions who have the most years of service reflecting their longevity of terms. When I was hired 18 years ago, the applicants taking the civil service test was overwhelming in the room. It was full of people taking the test. City of Gaston was a place firemen wanted to serve. Today, we're struggling to have two or three even to apply for the position. And once we're lucky to hire for this position, it is a struggle to keep them once they see the discrepancy in workload versus pay scale. They see the condition of current commanders and do not want to see that path for their own futures. The capacity needed from these commanders is a huge base on a lack of new firefighters coming into the city. The commanders are working with increased run volumes at an all-time high. The commanders are giving more of themselves than most communities, all while receiving the lesser pay scale. With your help to increase compensation and provide improved morale among our long-term commanders, we could see increased desire for future firefighters to return to the City of Gaston. I want to appreciate you taking your time to hear our commanders plead to you today. I know we have a long way to close the pay scale concerns that exist between our firefighters and this administration. My motivation to speak to you today was to answer the plea of my fellow brotherhood of firefighters who are ranked as commanders to voice these concerns on their behalf. These commanders, they're tired, they're weary, they're worn out, they're mentally and physically drained, but unfortunately, it is not in large part from the pressure of their roles. They accept their role to fight and serve at all costs for their community. It struggles in large part due to the lack of support and compensation in relation to their dedication and service. They need encouragement to keep going, and you provide an awesome opportunity to let these men know you see them and you appreciate them. We would respectfully ask you to consider a higher incremental raise to help close the pay scale gap for these commanders who have invested the most of their years' service and careers protecting this city and its citizens. They help to motivate and encourage others to come and serve here. As of today, the highest-ranking officers question why ourselves we do stay, much less considering encouraging others to come invest themselves. Please help us change the course of not only the long-term dedicated service of our commanders, but for the generation of firefighters to come. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, may I?
If I... I was going to ask Ms. Rossa to come, and if we... If I could just ask the council members that they would just kind of hold the comments so we can get through this. We'll ask Ms. Rossa if she'll come. Is there anyone else from the group? Okay, Ms. Rossa, if you'll come, please. Who shall speak? I know you didn't speak in opposition to the budget, but she's speaking also in favor of the budget. Ms. Rossa?
Yes, ma'am. So I am here today to ask for your approval of this budget. I have spoken with each one of you individually, and we have went through this budget in detail. And then last week, we spent about an hour and 10 minutes in here going through in detail this budget. We have heard the concerns, y'all have heard the concerns over the past week with what they call discrepancies in what we have done. Like I told you, from the very beginning, we were listening, and I was guided in a way to make sure that our lowest-paying level jobs were taken care of. And that's what we did in this budget. We made sure not only to increase the starting pay in the fire department and the police department, but also across the city, in public works, parking wrecks. We elevated our lowest-paying jobs, which are 1004 to 1208. And so, we did what we were asked to do. We also looked at retention, and through retention, the only thing we knew to do was look at longevity. And so, we increased longevity, and there again segregated out the police and fire department for those in police and fire that have been here, as you said, the service of time that they've been here, that they can get more pay through longevity. And so, starting at 25 years, which is where it cuts off now at 10%, in the police and fire department, we talked about how they could go up from 11% at 26 years all the way up to 15% at 30 years of service, and that's where it maxes out. So, we did look at ways of trying to elevate their pay. But then, when we talked about the police and the fire departments, there again, we stopped. We did, we elevated the pay in both, in the fire department with the firefighters and the drivers, and then we elevated the pay in the starting pay for, in the police department for the officers and for the sergeants. So, we tried to be consistent in what we did. But since that time, we have heard from you, and there again, I, you know, I work for this city. I'm an employee just like they're an employee. I'm just doing my job. And so, I was asked to look at if there was some way that we could do something for the commanders and the lieutenants. And so, we have looked at that. So, we do have a change to the amended, to the budget, the proposed budget that was presented last week. This change is to the budget document. It makes no change in the budget ordinance, okay? Because we did all of this within personnel. So, it did not change the ordinance itself in any way. The change is in the budget doc, okay, document. And basically, I need to present this change today in public forums so we'll all know what it is. And it involves both the commanders and the lieutenants. So, we'll start with the commanders. There's 33 commanders, and they all make the same pay. That was a change that was made by Chief Carroll, I would say possibly maybe five, six, seven years ago. It's been some time. He put all the commanders' pay at the same base pay. They currently make 1766 an hour.
Lisa, for the record, can you, because one group is fire and the other police, could you just, for the record, make that distinction?
Yes, so we're talking about fire commanders. Yes, sir. We're talking about fire commanders. So, they currently make 1766 an hour. They were, in the proposed budget that was given to you last week, they were getting a 2.5% raise, and this has been adjusted to a 5% raise, which is, the raises, city raises were broken down to where if you made less than $25,000, you were getting 5%. If you were between $25,000 and $50,000, you were going to get a 3.75%. And then, if you were $50,000 or above, you were getting a 2.5%. And they fell in that $50,000 or above category based on a base pay. So, this will take them from 1766 to 1855, which is now a 5% raise. We did the same thing for lieutenants in the police department. They do not make the same amount of money. Lieutenants are broken down into three pay scales. The ones that are making 2411 will go to 2534. Those at 2534 will go to 2662, and those at 2597 will go to 2729, which there again also is a 5% raise for lieutenants. So, with these changes that y'all have asked me to make, basically in the fire department, we have spent a little over half a million dollars in personnel costs this year with the raises. In the police department, it was a good bit less than that, about $280,000. But there again, the fire department, we elevated almost two, averaged out about $2 an hour. The police department, we only averaged out about a dollar an hour because they had gotten raises back in 2020. So, this is the change, proposed change that has been made to the budget, the only change that's been made since last week. And so, there again, we think it's a good budget, and we are asking for your approval of this budget, and we're asking for unanimous consent to consider today.
How many impacted employees in each group?
There are 33 commanders, and there are only seven lieutenants.
Lisa, first of all, well, I have a technical question, but first of all, I want to thank you for acknowledging that you heard from this council these concerns. Second of all, can you clarify, so this 5% four-step raise for commanders and lieutenants applies to base pay, correct?
Base pay.
So, this will also affect longevity pay and EMT pay or that 5%?
It does, because I said last week, when you increase base pay, your base salary, your base pay, that affects everything. It affects your retirement, it affects everything. That's why the cost is so much and all, because we have to cost it out before we show the increase. We take an employee and we put this new rate in there, and then we have to cost out what the increase is for retirement, for all of those things. Their longevity is still 10%, but now it's more, they'll get more in longevity because their base salary is more.
It's 10% of a larger base salary.
That's right.
Yeah, base pay.
That's right.
Lisa, the, I'm sorry, you through council?
Yeah, go ahead.
The total cost of change, excuse me, the total cost of the change is $143,292. Does that include all of the incremental changes that you and Councilman Wilson just discussed, the longevity?
It does.
So, all told?
Yes, that's the total change for what we did, this change.
Yeah, so that's a fully loaded number.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, rough math, you divide 143,000 by 40 employees that are affected, I mean, you're talking about $3,000, $3,300 per employee this change would make, okay?
Councilman Cannon?
Yes. Back about, I don't know, seven or eight months ago, I tried to get something passed through here. I talked about it, giving every employee at the City of Gaston where you dug a ditch, who was the commander, whatever he was, a $2 an hour raise along with Councilman Reed. Nobody came up here that time, and I also wanted to tag along with the thing, and in September, you'd get, everybody would get another dollar an hour raise. So, that would have been $3 an hour raise for every city employee in Gaston. And nobody came, nobody said anything, and, you know, so me and Councilman Reed just kind of let it go. We figured it fell on deaf ears, you know? And also, we talked with Commissioner Ramsey, I did, down at Trevor Goss's one day, and told him what we was trying to do, you know? And so, I mean, everybody should have knew what we was trying to do back then, but we heard from nobody, not the first person we heard from. And that would have been a $3 an hour raise, but, you know, by the end of this month, but, you know, we didn't hear from anybody, so I guess, you know, that was, that's just my theory there.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Rossa?
Like I said, we're asking for unanimous consent.
We'd have good consent out of the council.
Yes, sir? Any other questions?
Well, just, can you, Lisa, what's the top-line number for total, across the board, for all employees in Gaston, including police, fire, city employees, commanders, lieutenants, firefighters, drivers?
We had spent right at $2.2 million.
$2.2 million?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rossa? And even me have asked for unanimous consent for this budget. What do I hear? Do I have unanimous consent from the council? I don't hear anything.
Well, I just, I just want to say thank you. I know that it's not what maybe everybody would want to see, but I do want to say that this is encouraging, that for the first time in the last four years that I've been here, a budget was presented to us. We heard from the community. We came back to this administration and asked for some adjustments, and I just want to thank you for doing that, Lisa. I want to thank you guys for going back and looking at this and trying to find a way to at least send a gesture to our first responders that we hear them and we're listening to them, and I hope, even though this isn't, I'd love to be able to pay everybody a million dollars, but I hope this at least goes as a positive step in the direction that we're trying to address the problem, and hopefully it'll mend this relationship and get it going in the right direction.
I ask for you, we have a motion on the floor. I ask for unanimous...
We're on the discussion, right?
No.
No. I'll second. I'll second the unanimous consent.
Now, we're in the discussion.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to our firemen, to our police, to all our first responders. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is the largest raise we have given to city employees and to you all. Is that not right, Ms. Lisa?
Unless we've ever spent in personnel calls.
So, I know the commanders probably wanted more, but just like Councilman Wilson said, we heard you all, the commanders called us, and we called like we said we would do, and talked with Lisa and Carrie Payne and Frankie Davis also. So, I think this is a really good budget. So, I just appreciate you working on it and finding the way to get it done. So, thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
This is for unanimous consent for immediate consideration today. Those in favor to consider the ordinance at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. Ramsey, I saw your hand back there, but in order for you to speak, I have to get unanimous consent from the council. That's the reason why I was, I wanted you to know I was not ignoring you, but it was the fact that for the procedure, I had to get, I have to get unanimous consent from the council.
Fine with me?
I'm okay with it all.
You don't have it.
Okay.
No matter.
Well, I don't have unanimous consent. Madam President, I believe we skipped over... I'm going back. I was going back. Okay. There's an ordinance that are amending the fiscal year budget, 2022 budget, to reflect the receipt and the appropriation of the Alabama Tourism Department granting the amount of $1,500...
$15,000.
This ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have no action on 1223 Hope Street because it has already been abated by the owner. That is, our next item is a public hearing, is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 123 Park Street in District 1. Latricia D. Robinson has been the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in August of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council? This is in District 1. I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 129 Park Street in District 1. This is Antoine Harvey being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in August of last year. There've been no improvements or no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Since that's in my district, and that's the street they told me to stay off of, I move to abate.
I got it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 452 Kealan Alley in District 3, Orlando Jennings being the last known owners. Is there anyone speaking opposition? If you'll come to the podium, please, and give your name and address.
Amaya Jennings.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, I think it's on. Amaya Jennings.
All right.
And what's your address?
137 Panjar.
All right. Okay.
I don't think the house is able to be fixed, so if that was to tear the property down, could I keep the land? Or does it work like this?
If the city tears it down, what you could pay for the demolition, but yeah, the land is still yours, you just have to pay for the demolition of it.
Okay.
And you can get with Mr. Harbison with the Building Department, and he can help you work out a payment plan so that you can pay it over time.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay.
And you'll just be responsible for the actual cost to tear it down and haul it off, nothing else.
But the land is still yours. All right.
Do I wait after court to get it?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
I'm sorry. I've already, I've already abated it, Mr. Harbison.
I'm sorry, you just go right ahead. We filed this case in December of last year. There was a permit taken out a week later. There were no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Just a point of clarification, I want to point out that all three of the last three public hearings we've held are on vacant properties, vacant homes. These are not homes that are occupied currently. These are all homes that are unoccupied.
Now, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And I want to apologize to the homeowner next door. I told her that we would, it would come before us about three weeks ago, so that's my fault. I gave you the wrong information.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1706 Barnes Avenue in District 6. This is Michael McGuire being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involved a mobile home. It has been moved, but they left behind trash and debris and an overgrown lot. We filed it in December of last year. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, there's no... Our next item, there's no action necessary at 1311 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District Seven. The nuisance has already been abated. Our next item is a resolution awarding bid number 3483 for solid waste transfer and disposal services. The purchasing department has recommended awarding the bid to the A and D of Alabama LLC, and $2,772,690,000 is the estimated three-year toll. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution amending Section One of the Resolution Number R-403-04 as amended by Resolution Number R-238-10, R-318-17, and R-192-21. This is regarding the steps in pay plan. The pay plan consists of 25 pay ranges with 48 steps in each range. There is a difference of 1 and 1/4% between each step. This resolution moves five steps at the lowest pay and add five steps at the top. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution amending Resolution Number R-403-04 regarding the pay plan and the Resolution Number R-463-04 regarding job classifications. This adds a job classification of assistant city engineer. It also changes the pay range of the job classification of environmental service clerk, permanent clerk, deputy building official, therapeutic specialist, mechanic, golf equipment mechanic, and communication specialist. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is our first reading. This is an ordinance ascending to annexation of property to the City of Gaston. And this is Lynn D. Watkins has requested her property located at 129 Somerset Pass be annexed into the city. The engineering department has recommended approval, and this ordinance was presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Any new business?
I'm sorry. I was not in here for the contract with the Edward County for the mental health program. Is there any way we can get that today? Did y'all discuss that? I was not in here to approve that.
Disgusted, is it?
That was the one that we talked about with Scott. Two hundred and fifty dollars. Okay.
It's part of the ARP ones. They've already approved it in the ARP budget. You know, we've been working on this contract for months and months and months trying to get it the way it needs to be. And I'm really needing to make a payment to them in our fiscal year, in this year.
This is, uh, which one? This one? Okay.
Madam President, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask for consideration today, a resolution authorizing contract for services with the Edward County Commission.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Any department reports? Uh, we have remarks by the council.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I was still shuffling papers. I do have, I do have a couple of announcements regarding the upcoming City of Gaston runoff election, which will be next Tuesday, September the 20th. Today is actually the deadline for me to receive absentee applications by mail, but people can walk in and vote absentee, as long as you qualify for one of those reasons, through the close of business on Thursday of this week. We are also going to have a public test of the machines that are going to be used on Election Day. That test will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, at 4:00 PM, and that location is the fourth floor of the Edward County Courthouse. And for your indulgence, I would like to announce all of our polling places one more time. There's still some confusion, I think, about City of Gaston polling places from time to time. From District One, it's Antioch Family Life Center and East Gaston Community Center. For District Two, East Gaston Community Center and Thompson Community Center. District Three, the former Gaston High School Lunchroom, Carver Community Center and Thompson Community Center. For District Four, the venue, Metta Brook Family Life Center and Downtown Civic Center. District Five, Downtown Civic Center and the Tabernacle Gym. District Six, Dwight Baptist Church and Walnut Park Community Center. District Seven, Dwight Baptist Church and Kiwanis Pavilion. Thank you.
I'd like to announce that due to the city election next Tuesday, September the 20th, the next week's council meeting and the work session will be held on Wednesday, September the 21st. And also, he left out, I guess he was taking Mr. Williamson's place, but just like to congratulate Jeremy Ward. He's retiring, and they'll have a reception for him, I think, on Thursday at Marana Park. And so we'd like to thank him for his services to the city, but he's, he's retiring, Jeremy Ward. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Just kind of piggybacking off of your comments regarding Jeremy, Jeremy will be missed. I don't, I don't have to tell Heath that. I mean, he'll be missed. Jeremy is not only a great employee, but he's a, he's an amazing person, good, good individual, and the city will miss him. Will lose, will lose another good employee, for sure. Do want to take the opportunity to, to issue my condolences and thoughts and prayers to, to Officer, to Officer Douglas Guyton and his family. His, he lost his mother last night, and, and so, her, her name's Annie Ruth Guyton. And so we do want to offer our condolences up and prayers to that family. It's a very difficult time, and if you know anything about him, you know that he was very close to his mother. So, so again, we'll be praying for him as he manages through this very difficult time. Lastly, I'd just like to say thank you to Lisa, Finance Department, and all of those who worked on a very difficult, worked through a very difficult budget cycle. You know, you never, you never are able to give everything that you want to give. You definitely aren't ever able to make everybody happy. Lot of very difficult things to manage through. But the good thing about our budget cycles is that they come every year. And so there's an opportunity next year to, to capture some of the things that didn't get addressed this time. But, but I don't think anybody should walk away from any budget cycle believing that, that our first responders aren't appreciated, that our police aren't appreciated, or any city employee, because they very much are. But, but there, again, there are just a lot of very difficult things that have to be managed and, and, you know, sometimes you can't do it all in one budget cycle. And, and that's tough. That's the tough part, because you want to. But, but again, I appreciate all the hard work, and thanks to the mayor and the council and my 12 years on the council, the mayor and the council have always, we don't have those fiascos that you see in a lot of other cities where they're, they're fighting publicly over, over the budget. We, we are able to work through a lot of these things, and, and we, we understand the process, so I definitely appreciate that. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to our first responders. And really, I wish we, as a council, since the commissioner's name was called, we would have let him speak. But that's, that's the right, if you want to object. But he should have been allowed to speak since his name was called by one of the council members. But thank you again. I want to give my condolences to Officer Guyton also. But y'all, for our first responders, I know it's a tough job, and you probably can make a lot more money going somewhere else, but hang in there. It, it's hopefully to get better. It's got to get better. I wish we wouldn't have waited this long to give this type of raise, but it is what it is, so you all hang in there, because I know y'all love this city. You're just not doing it for the money. This, this job is not just for the money. It's a calling. So, this is what you all want to do, and you put your life on the line every day. I'm not just talking about the firemen, I'm talking to your police officers too. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know it's tough. And I want to say to Commander McGlynn, thank you for what you said. I've been on that side of the podium, talking to the council people when I was junior president, so I, I know what you all are dealing with, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Lisa, also.
Councilman.
We don't get along all the time, but thank you.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. Echo my fellow council members. This, this budget's 54.8 or 54.9 million dollars. That's a lot of money. The exercise you've seen us do with first responders, police and fire, and our public and other public employees, there's other layers of discussions that, that we don't see, that maybe don't take quite the precedence, but it's, you know, we, we probably need a lot more money to make the budget the way that we really want to make it, so there aren't easy decisions to be made. I do appreciate the people, the ones of you that called me and reached out to me. We had good dialogue, we had good conversations. I also want to thank Lisa Rossar and the administration. We had dialogue, and we had conversations about 24 hours ago. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's a good budget. It's not a perfect budget. There's never going to be a perfect budget, but I, I think we accomplished a lot. It's the largest employee raise in the history of the city, around 2.2 million dollars. And I agree with Councilman Williams, we do this every 12 months. There's going to be areas where, I've already made notes, that the city needs to look at in, in 12 months, really in nine months when this process starts. So, it's a continual, it's always a living document, so to speak. It, it, to me, the budget never stops, so. And, and I do want to thank the first responders. I want to thank everybody in this room. I want to thank the guys that came and then had, had, had to leave. It shows that you care, and it shows that you respect your families, and, and I respect that. You have every right to respect your families and to respect yourself. This isn't the time or the place for me to go into a personal comment, but some of you have heard this, and some of you haven't, but about 35 years ago, my, at the time, 18-month year old son quit breathing, and the Gaston Fire Department saved his life. And that's for another story for another day, but there were four men that came to our house and basically saved my son's life, who's 37 years old today and teaches third grade at Thompson Elementary School. You can't miss him. He's about six foot six, 300 pounds. If you ever go to Thompson, you'll see. So, you're, you know, and I love Councilman Wilson's comment, you're not going to out-Gaston me, or you're not going to out-Gaston Fire Department me. When I see my son, I think of you guys. And, and until you've been in that position, you don't know how much you'll always appreciate a group of men that saved your child's life. So, I'll, I'll, that's, that's, I could talk all, all day about that. But thank you to the administration, and thank you to you guys that are out there every day, 24 hours a day. It is appreciated more than you know. We'll never be able to pay you the money that, that you deserve. It's just, I don't think any city can do that, but we're striving to do as, as well as, as we can. Want to, maybe another note, went to the Gaston Sports Complex Saturday. The place was crawling with people from all over. They had their first soccer tournament. I had not been out on that soccer field, the new field. It is so, it's larger when you get out there than when you're looking at it from the parking lot. I was really proud of, of the City of Gaston and our Parks and Rec Department and people that have put and poured in the work. Heath Williamson, our city engineer, countless hours of redesigning and making that work. The administration for, for providing the leadership to, to create this sports complex. Yeah, it's not going to be as good as others, but y'all, it is going to be fantastic. If you have children that are out there, you know what I'm talking about, and if you don't, I encourage you to go see for yourself. Fantastic facility, and we're not through. There's a couple of more phases to come that are really going to set it apart, I think, from, from many other sports parks, so.
What district is that in? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's in my district. Yeah, District Four. That's right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. I appreciate you reminding me. It's, and it's a further relationship with the community college. We, we, our community college is our big, one of our biggest assets, if not the biggest fundamental asset in the city and in the county, and it just furthers that relationship to make our city a better place. Want to thank, well, I think I'm, I guess that's all my thinking, but thank everybody for what you do for our city, and I hope that we can continue this type of, of a relationship. And I am friends with Officer Guyton and his family, and I did not know about the passing of his mother, so thank you for bringing that up. I, I don't think I ever met her, but she has some really fine children and grandchildren, so she was probably an excellent person, so let's keep the Guyton family in our prayers. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Madam President. I'll be quick. I think today's a good day. There's over 1,000 people that, in this town are right out that are going to get extra money in their pocket, and I think that's a good thing. I know we didn't get it right, but I never have in my life got it completely right, and we'll come back next year. Hopefully, I'll have the opportunity to do that, and we'll take another swing at it. So, thank you all for being here. The one thing I will say, since I won't see anybody until the election next week, the single biggest way to get what you want in this town is to vote. You got to vote. So, please, everybody, show up, cast your vote next Tuesday.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I think, you know, that everybody got a little raise this time, but I think y'all need to be thinking about your insurance. When, every week that you work, the price of your insurance is going up. It's going up again this year. Back when I worked, a zillion years ago it seemed like now, we took, instead of getting raises sometimes, we took where they would pay for our insurance. Now, all that's gone, and you're having to pay for your insurance heavy now. If y'all guys try to retire, it's going to eat your retirement up for your insurance, your health insurance. You need to be thinking about that in the next administration. You need to be digging with them and see if they can't get some of your insurance premiums down when you get ready to retire, see if they can't help that also, you know, because if you don't, you're going to be working and retiring and, you know, not having any retirement money. Your insurance is going to eat it up. That's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to piggyback Johnny on this raise that we talked about earlier and forever. But thanks to this council also, and to Lisa, eight or nine months ago, we met with two firemen. I suspect they were representing y'all, and we all agreed at that time that we would concentrate on the bottom, hiring them and then retaining them once they got in here. This budget did exactly that. So, I was happy with the budget. How am I happy with the budget now? But more so, I was happy then. So, we, we read it last week, we talked about it, and then, as I was going out, somebody said, wait a minute, there's something wrong here. I said, what are you talking about, man? We've worked for two years on this budget and got it down to where everybody was going to get money, and especially the bottom, where they really need it. Well, you missed it on the commander and the medic end. And I said, good Lord, I forgot about that. We didn't, we were concentrating so hard on hiring and retaining that that's what the glitch was. And now, hopefully, that glitch is fixed. Again, I want to thank this council for hanging in there with this, for making this exception and getting this done, and it's a darn good budget, Lisa. It really is. Best one I've seen, especially when we made the change. I hope you all appreciate it as much as we do. Oh, by the way, I need to say a word about a little girl that's six years old in Johnny's Her name is Mrs. Beck. She's a, I get kind of wound up on this. I got to go from this other part to, to this Beck. She, Paris Beck, she planted a crawling flower on a dump stand. The city came by and cut it down. This little girl and her. This little girl, in her persistence and dedication, has been watering that plant, she's got it all the way back up and growing again. The reason I bring that up is to show you what a six-year-old girl with dedication and persistence can do. And Paris Beck, that place is forever known, around that sign, as Paris Island. That's all I got, thank you.
And I just want to make a comment to Councilman Worthy about the decision that was made. There's a rule of procedure, and I follow the rule of procedure. So just wanted you to know, it was not a, not against, but I follow the rules of procedure. I don't have, no, I don't have to explain, but I have to follow the rules of procedure.
Madam President, just one final comment, and I'm going to, I'm probably going to step all over myself with this one, because I didn't get the little girl's name, but at the 9/11 event on Sunday, I was stopped, as I was walking into the event, by a, a little girl, she was probably around five years old, and there were a couple things that happened that were very eye-opening. One, there was, there was, she, she, she made it very clear that she, she wanted to know what all the fuss was about. She didn't know why the fire trucks were there, she, she didn't know why any of that was going on, and so her mother was trying to explain it, asked me to, to do so, and I think we did, between the two of us, I think we did a decent job of getting her to understand that it was about remembering and never forgetting what, what happened on that day. So that's, again, it speaks to why it's important to continue from a civic perspective, to continue to teach our young people. But secondly, she also, as we were going through that, she also saw the fire truck and wanted to hop in the truck, and a, as you would expect, the officers accommodated. They were really busy getting ready and, and getting themselves together for the event, but they stopped, and they didn't just passively give her a tour of the truck, they went through some great detail, pretty much let her crawl under the truck, and, and so I think that there, you know, there's a lot that can be said. You know, everybody's passionate about money, but at the core, these guys don't do what they do because it's not something that they're passionate about, and I think somebody spoke to that earlier, but they, they, they really enjoy their job, and when, when a young person wants to know about what they do, they're proud to talk about it, so, so I, I appreciate that. That was, that gave me kind of a warm and fuzzy Sunday, so I, I appreciate that.
I call for a motion to adjourn.